Evening, I would like. I would like to call to order the May seventeenth Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting. I am Mrs. Madeline Lasalle Frazier, Vice Chair of this committee and the District Eight Rep. For Prince George's County Board of Education. Thank you so much for everyone being here this evening. We will begin by having roll call. Ms. Barton?
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Kenneth Harris. Mrs. Madeline Lasalle Frazier.
Present.
Dr. Juanita Miller. Dr. Juanita Miller. Mr. David Murray.
She's here. She just probably can't get off mute.
Ms. Lolita E. Walker.
Present, thank you.
I need her to answer because I have to have quorum. I need to know she's here.
Here, 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 here.
Thank you. All right, we have quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. May I have a motion to adopt the May seventeen to twenty twenty-three meeting agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and second to adopt the May seventeen meeting agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The agenda is adopted. Moving right along to one point four, let's look at the approval of the April nineteen meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the April nineteen minutes?
I'm going to ask that that means, because I don't have a copy of them. Mia, was I at that meeting, April nineteenth?
No, you were not.
Okay, so. I haven't seen the minutes. From that meeting. So Madam Chair, you might want, unless you, I mean, you can second a motion.
I can motion, I can second the motion if it's, if it's approved by.
Yes. If this Walker approves it.
Yeah, so moved, thank you.
Okay, I'll second it. It has been moved and second to approve the April nineteen twenty twenty-three meeting, meeting minutes. Sorry about that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The minutes are approved. Item two point two for public comments, we have no public comments this evening. Two point one for labor partners, and we have no labor partners this evening. So moving right along, this is going to be a quick meeting, guys. Three point one, discussion and action items. Three point one, the operations moment for blueprint schools, schools update and the blueprint schools with new buildings timeline and summer projects updates. So I will now yield the floor to Dr. Mark Fawcett, the Chief Operations Officer. Thank you.
All right, and thank you so much. Good afternoon, board members, colleagues, and members of the community. I am not Dr. Mark Fawcett. I am Shirazka Coleman. I serve, I have the privilege of serving as Associate Superintendent for Supporting Services. I do, however, bring greetings on behalf of Dr. Fawcett, our Chief Operating Officer, who is unable to attend tonight's meeting. We're grateful for the opportunity during the operations moment to provide an update on phase two of the blueprint, blueprint schools. This information will be provided by the Director of the Office of Alternative Infrastructure Planning and Development, Mr. Jason Washington. Second, the Capital Programs Department is responsible for the major renovations and building of new school system facilities. This afternoon, Mr. William Smith, Project Manager Supervisor, will provide the planned summer building improvement projects for the school system. So at this point, I yield it to Mr. Washington.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much. I have had the pleasure of seeing a few of you over the last couple of weeks for some site visits. And hopefully addressing questions related to the current phase one schools. What I wanted to do today was kind of give an overview of where we are in the framework for phase two blueprint schools. Providing some information based upon new legislation and where we are in the process and, and some, some timeline and dates. I don't know if you share the presentation here. And we could skip to the next page. As you can see, phase two program will contain eight new schools. That will impact fifteen schools either through consolidation or a realignment of enrollment. The eight schools, Margaret Brent Elementary School, James Duckworth Regional Program School. Hyattville Elementary School, Spring Hill Lake Elementary School. A New Brandywine Area K-eight School, a new Robert Frost Area K-eight School. Templeton Elementary School and a new Fairwood Area Elementary School. And the, the next slide. Basically, you know, it was, we started out with six per the Bill to Learn statute. And it was updated in this past legislative session, and I will get to that, those particulars in just a moment. First, to kind of give you an idea of how there's a division of labor in this process and in this program. The developer, we're in the procurement process for phase two for a, a new developer for phase two. Which may or may not be the current developer that we have now for phase one. The developer is responsible for the design build work, financing of the program. And providing the long-term maintenance services. And then our job is to make each site available so that they can use them to build the new schools. We would make required payments as set forth in the contract. We would also perform our retain responsibilities, at which point that are mostly tied to custodial. And grass cutting and snow removal. And then we would also provide approval and oversight through the steering committee, which we have later today, which meets quarterly. That has a representative from the, the CEO, the county executive, and the Chair of the County Council. Next slide, please. So a couple of updates here. House Bill four fifty-eight that was literally signed yesterday. Was an update to the. The, the Bill to Learn Act that was passed and has been subsequently amended each of the past three years. Little tweaks here and there, but this was the most substantial change that we've seen to date. Some of the, the, the key points here is that Prince George's County is no longer a project agreement signatory. Which aligns it with phase one. That was done mostly because we would be the responsible party. And there could be potential impact on the bonding capacity of the county if they were to stay a signatory to the agreement. And so that was done to allow for the county to continue to, to have the bond capacity that they have and the bond rating that they have. Secondly, it increased the number of schools from six to eight. And so we were working over the past two years with the assumption that we would be delivering six schools. The state requirement up that to eight, which brought in Templeton and a new Fairwood. Based upon structural steel analysis that was done that showed that these two new school, that these two schools were in urgent need of replacement. Along with the additional two schools, the state provided an additional fifty-five million dollars. Twenty-five million that will become available July first, twenty twenty-four. And then an additional two million over their twenty-five million dollar contribution over the next thirty years. So in, in quantum, that the state support is approximately, or right now is eight hundred and ten million dollars. Is the state portion or contribution for the building of these new schools. The bill also finalized the establishment of what is known as a Prince George's County Public Private Partnership Fund. That we would pay a contribution into, along with the county, along with the state, that will be managed by the IAC. We will work with the, the county, Maryland Stadium Authority, the Interagency Commission on School Construction. And, and ourselves to sign a four-party MOU that will lay out the terms of this relationship. The funds that will be utilized, what that structure will look like, governance, reviews, et cetera. We are planning to start those meetings with all of the parties involved in June. With hopes of presenting to the board a, a draft MOU agreement early in the fall. The one thing to keep in mind is that what did not change is the statutory drop dead date. That basically means we must have a deal in place by July first, twenty twenty-four. Or we would forfeit the eight hundred and ten million dollars of state money. And so that is the biggest driver of our procurement now is that date. Is to get an agreement executed with a new developer by July one. And funding will begin once that agreement is executed in fiscal twenty-five from the state. And the, the state is only requiring us to enter into this agreement. There are right now no other strings attached, like reporting requir, there are reporting requirements, but there is no minimum efforts. Things that, dates that need to be met, schools that need to be built on certain dates. All of that is driven by PG CPS. All the state is requesting is an executed. Contract in place by July first, twenty twenty-four to access the money. And the only requirement set forth in the statute to continue to receive state funds is to stay in the agreement. Next slide. So this is kind of where we are right now in this procurement process. We are in, basically in, in phase two. But part one really was focused on and will focus on selecting a preferred developer. We released on April twenty-eighth, the RFP. The RFP contained a draft project agreement and a draft exclusive negotiating agreement. The RFP is public and it's on the Prince George's County purchasing website. Our expectation is by July fourteenth, which is the due date for the RFP. That the project agreement will be fully negotiated as well as the ENA. Which will govern the relationship of the selected party through the. Through the design period, which is basically an eight-month period. We would select a developer in September, and then they have until July one to close the deal. And so that's what the ENA would govern that relationship through that period of time. Part two of this ENA period would be really focused on designing and ensuring that when we close the deal. We are in a, we are in position to start building the new schools. So as soon as we sign the agreement, we will begin operationalizing and working towards delivering schools. Right now, the anticipated delivery date are two schools in twenty twenty-six. Four schools in twenty twenty-seven, and two more schools in twenty twenty-eight. Next slide. And so really to, to give you a sense of where we are right now. Like I said, we have started negotiations and really feedback with the developers. We, we hold one-on-ones where we incorporate or take their comments to documents, ways that they want to refine it. Ways that we want to refine the agreement. All leading up to July fourteenth is when they submit their, their package to us. We anticipate releasing a notice of intent to award. And by September fifth, in early September, we would then also come to the board. These will be in conjunction together with our recommended developer as well as the, the package. That they are presenting, and we will put that in the, in a BAS to the board. And then, once that is approved, they will proceed as quickly as possible to move to get everything in place. To get a guaranteed max price, all of the, the things that are being needed to lock in pricing by July first, twenty twenty-four. One other thing that's, that should be noted, the IAC has approval rights or veto rights to the contract. And that's the reason why we are moving quickly to get a contract in place. So that we will have a final contract, but will not. Execute the contract for nine months. So we anticipate there not being any issue that prevents us from closing on time. In the interim, we can work it out, should the IAC have any issues and questions. Next slide. A few things to keep in mind finally on this transaction structure, which is very similar to phase one. It pretty much lays out the, the scope of services. As I said before, the, the developer is required to handle the design bill, the finance, the lifecycle maintenance. But also, we have set forth handback requirements that are, when we receive these facilities back in thirty years. There is a minimum useful life that they are required to have. So that we are not getting buildings that immediately need intervention and immediately needs investment. But are able to be slowly worked back into the asset class of the school system. Next slide. A few things to note that we are excited about for phase two that did not take place in phase one. There is a requirement of MBE equity into this deal. Up to thirty percent of the full equity contribution of the developer. Must be an, a MBE-recognized entity. Additionally, we are requiring the developer to provide a non-dilutable equity portion to the community. A community equity requirement, so that will allow for Prince George's County residents and businesses to invest in this project. To get a return on investment of their public tax dollars. That's, this will be the first time this has ever been done in this type of program and project. We are excited to, to break new ground and, and everyone is excited to see this through. This will require a, an immense amount of marketing and outreach. And, and truly making sure that folks understand the, the parameters of this requirement and of this offering. But we are excited about the opportunity for the community to invest in their community assets for the phase two program. Next slide. And so here is just the handback requirements that lay out all, everything and the useful life that needs to be in the building when we receive them back. Basically, the bigger drivers and the big cost that CIP and the school system have is around mechanical. And you will see that the mechanical systems have to have a minimum of fifteen years useful life when we get the schools back. And so built into the pricing is the fact that the developer will have to replace every system that you see here. By within years twenty to twenty-five. So there's a requirement that it is their responsibility to replace all of the HVAC, all of the piping, all of the. The, the fixtures, everything to adhere to the handback requirements as set forth in the contract. Next slide, please. And so with that, I will see if there are any questions. I know this is a flood of information. We will ensure that we continue to provide updates and future briefings on our status as we move forward.
I have a question. I'm trying to find the raise my hand. Let me see.
You so much for the presentation. I think we all have questions, so I'm going to take personal privilege to ask the first one. I had an interest in finding out a little bit more about how. This community equity investment piece, how it works, because it sounds intriguing to me, but I'm not very familiar with it. So can you share a little bit more about what that community investment, equity investment means for our constituents?
So what it looks like, I don't know if, if you are familiar and everyone's familiar with crowdfunding. But it is utilizing a crowdfunding platform through Regulation CF through the SEC. And so Regulation CF allows for. Offerers, which would be the developer, and they find a partner that will offer securities. And take on all of the compliance responsibilities, the reporting requirement responsibilities. And basically serve as the accredited investor for the fund. So, so for those that, you know, most accredited investors, you have to have a minimum net worth. You have to understand what you're investing in, and you have to sign prospectus after prospectus, et cetera. What this would provide would be a platform to where we would provide all of that information. That information would be provided, but the reporting requirements, the compliance requirements would be all on the developer. So there won't be a trap door once someone invests and then they're told that they are penalized because they didn't report something or anything of that sort. And so the idea here is to localize the investment. Because one of the criticisms that we've heard about these type of projects, period, P-threes are that. The developers are the only ones that can, that, that make any money. Or the businesses are the only ones that are able to take advantage of the upside of this. And so this, we believe, is a way of, of, of really bringing the community in and really utilizing this program as a community asset. There are tax dollars that will be paying for these schools, and we believe that residents and businesses should share. In the return on their investment through investing in the community equity piece of it. And so, so it will still, there's a lot to be worked out, but there are specific platforms that are in place now. That so we could go out right now and, and hire a firm and their whole job would be put this together. This will be thoughtful and I, I can pretty much guarantee there will be a lot of meetings and hearings and just to be able to lay out exactly what this means. Because this is not going to be like a savings account or a bank account where you can just show up and withdraw your money whenever you want. There is going to be a, a lockup period. There is going to be in, so all of these type of things we will be required to share with folks. So that they understand that this is a wealth-building tool to where you put it in and you just don't think about it. Like it, it's there, it's, it's, it's earning interest and compounding over time. As, as a potential, you know, asset that can be utilized down the road.
Thank you so much. This is really exciting to have the opportunity to have eight more new schools in our school district. I am beyond overjoyed at the fact that we're, the infrastructure is changing. And that our students get to have these beautiful facilities available to them in our community. So thank you. I see that our board member Lolita Walker had her hand up, and then we'll have Dr. Miller share her questions as well.
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. Let me put down my hands. And thank you, Board Member Lasalle Frazier, because I had a question on equity investment, so that takes away one. Thank you. Mr. Washington, I have three schools in District Nine that are affected by the, or impacted pleasantly impacted by now getting this amazing new school for the Brandywine area. I was hoping that I could get a copy of slides three and slides four so that I could leverage them inside of my own community chats. That would be so amazing. Also, if you could add to that slide or to one of the slides what timing looks like for that estimated timing. It could be even a quarter, like AMJ of X year. I think that that will help just to put people's. Thoughts in mind. And I also wanted to, is that feasible?
Yes, we, we have it right now. It will be July twenty twenty-seven is when new Brandywine will be delivered.
No problem. If you just throw it on that slide, I can go with the slide. Okay, that'll be amazing. Thank you. And then as far as updates go for, you said twenty twenty-nine?
No, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty.
Okay, twenty twenty-seven. I have seven on my paper, but for some reason I thought not. Got you. And so we'll be leveraging the same type of community input for that as you did previously with the previous schools, I imagine.
Yes, so, so what will, I'm sorry, I'll let you finish and then.
No, 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 that's it. I just wanted to, I mean, that's not till twenty twenty-seven. I don't know where I'll be at twenty twenty-seven. But I'm sure that we'll start to engage in community sessions and around, when, when will that be?
So right now, we anticipate that beginning in the fall. So after we, after we pick a developer, they are full speed ahead to deliver the school. So they have to get, so we are expecting, they probably will be breaking ground. Probably in the fall or winter of twenty-five for new Brandywine area school. So it is, it just depends on their, their timing and, and their schedule. But the expectation is that they will conduct community meetings through the project planning committees that are set up with the schools. And to, to get feedback and thoughts around particular hallmarks of the community. Other things around the functioning of the school that's key to help contribute to, to the designing of the schools. And, and so they're, they are expected and the developers are well aware that they are going to be responsible for. You know, multiple meetings with each community as we go forward through this process. Keeping in mind that, you know, it'll probably, it, it'll be infrequent at first and then become frequent once we start refining the design. But that expectation is, is that there, that was some feedback and a lesson learned from phase one. Is that we moved very fast and we did not do as much as we could have done on the front end of letting everybody know what we were thinking. To where they just had to react after the fact, and we want to make sure that that's not the case this time.
Awesome. And as we, I have two more things. And as we take the learnings, I'm sure you have many that you'll apply. But one of the learnings too is that we do it kind of as a collective. Community event versus, you know, individually tapping into certain communities. So that'll be awesome. I'm coming. All right, let me hurry, hurry up with the second one. Is that the other one, the, the second slide that I gave you was for the HB four fifty-nine stats update to the blueprint phase two. Let me do my second part in a minute because I got to get this, sorry.
Okay, so in the meantime, Dr. Miller, would you like to ask your questions? Dr. Miller, are you there?
I had to unmute myself. Are you there? Can you hear me?
Go right ahead.
Okay, I was, first of all, I was thanking Jason for, or Mr. Washington for that comprehensive presentation. And it was a lot to, you know, to absorb. But my question about equity has been answered because that seemed to be a consistent, because, question among the three of us. But another concern that, and maybe I didn't, I misunderstood. Clarify for me, in the beginning of the presentation, you mentioned the process in terms of where, who has to, who it has to go through. And the funding sources, right? And then you indicated that IAC, if they did not approve of something, that it would hold up, it could hold up. Did I interpret that correctly?
Yes, so, so per the statute, the IAC has to approve the contract. At, at the end, but to let everyone know, we don't believe that that will be a problem. And the reason why we don't believe that will be a problem is that we're including them in this process right now. So we have a meeting with them next week on the contract to get their thoughts, right, you know, a good year ahead of time. And they will be included as we evolve the contract with the developer and with the developers. So that when we present a, a preferred developer to you all in the fall, they will have seen the final contract. And they will have up to nine months to, to let us know if there are any issues. So we don't foresee any reason for, for that to be an impediment to closing on that specific, particular issue, for sure.
And that was my concern because if there's, you know, some, some issue that they may come up with, that just throws the whole project timeline behind. So that was why I wanted to know about that. I'm good. I'm good.
Okay.
And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dr. Miller. I'm wondering about the developers now. How many developers are um soliciting the contract?
So we have down selected to three. So one would be Prince George's County Education and Community Partners, our current uh partner now, um Aspire Educational uh Partners uh and uh the Prince George's County Education Collective. Uh, so uh they all come up with the, with with the name to to represent their teams. Uh, they, each of the teams uh has a builder, um, an architect, um, and a an equity team um uh built into it. Uh, and so, so we we had five respondents and we down selected to three. Um, and so um the selected preferred developer um will most like, will come from uh uh these, one of these three developers.
Thank you.
Hi, may I go? Thank you. Um, Madam LaSi Frazier, if you could release my video, please, that would be amazing. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay. So I just had two more questions. Thank you so much for you guys' patience. Uh, Mr. Washington, um, the one of the 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 slides I asked for, I hope it is right. I said three and four, but I'm hoping one is the HB four fifty nine stat update. Okay, cool. Thank you so much. That'll be super helpful. Um, but particularly because it's the most substantial changes today. So I think getting an overview of that is very nicely written. The last one is um, I've previously heard in the past that large companies, by way of MBE is what I'm talking about, that large companies um can sometimes mask getting this by adding MBEs to their contracts. However, the MBEs actually don't see the money on the back end. And so what I wanted to ask is how are we ensuring that these MBEs are really leveraged during this process? And that it's it's um, you know, they're getting paid.
No, so so what you were talking about is is using them as pass-throughs and and yes, companies, uh, yes. And that is a, that is a major concern with any project, uh, to be sure. How we've.
Yes, not just ours, just.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know. It's it's, that's, that is why uh our um MBE compliance on Phase One and will be replicated, li- little tweaks for Phase Two, um, are set up really around the dollar spend, not participation. So usually they 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 hang it out with the percentage of participation, not the dollar spent. So for Phase One, um, it is a minimum um of thirty percent of the total contract has to be expended to certified MBEs. Um, and so right now, the uh, the PGCECP team is right around thirty four percent, thirty five percent. So they have blown that that minimum out the water and which which has shows that there's capacity here. So when folks say that they don't have capacity, we, they have shown that they have capacity. The other uh, and so, so that's how we have um um gathered compliance. We have a um, a compliance firm that uh looks at certified payroll um as well as uh making sure that um all of the um, the hours are are booked and the, and and the firms are paid um as they should. Um, so what will change in Phase Two, what we have in the contract right now um is actually we have to conform to the state's uh requirement of MBE a little bit. But we still put, keep our uh Prince George's County um specific initiatives in it. So uh, the state only recognizes for MBEs, African American and women owned are the only two MBE categories that the state recognizes for state funds. Um, and they, and so we recognize, like Prince George's County recognizes pretty much all MBEs. And so how we handled it for Phase Two is we put in the state goals, but then we also put in uh a Prince George's County specific denotation of community-based businesses, which is, which is, which is driven by the the council's belief and and our belief is that we don't want capable companies here in the county to be overlooked because they of of other relationships or or any, and not looked at in a favorable light and not given an opportunity to compete. And so how we broken up that thirty percent this time is we put in a requirement for a a minimum uh percentage of certification of CBBS and we bumped up from thirty to thirty five percent. So we actually bumped up the the minimum uh MBE uh requirement to thirty five percent. Um, we are projecting, just to kind of give you a a quantum of what that looks like, we're projecting capital cost of around seven hundred fifty million dollars. So if they uh meet that goal of thirty percent, um, I think we're looking at um providing an investment uh in the community of what, uh, let's say over uh two hundred and and fifty million dollars or so um to to local businesses. Uh, and so right now, we um, I think we're around a hundred and twenty million for Phase One. And so I I think that we are uh really demonstrating um being a community um stakeholder and really focusing on um investing in the community. Um, and also in Phase Two, we are focused on uh local hiring as well. So we've actually put in a rec- a minimum requirement of local hires and uh local workers to work on the programs as well. And so, so we, we believe that this provides us with the platform to uh really uh for community businesses, uh stakeholders and residents to see Prince George's County as um a- as as a a place to do business with and that we are excited to, you know, to to help build capacity in the county.
Oh, that's awesome. Okay. Final question seriously this time. You talked costs at one point in there that are being given as a result of the steel. Um, you know, the two schools that needs to be uh built because it is still structural issue. And I know you said that we're getting money for that. And so I just was wondering, does that cover the cost for the?
Um, no. So so what what the, what the state provided was um a one-time uh payment of twenty five million. And then they had already committed twenty five million per year for thirty years. They upped that to twenty seven million um over thirty years. And so what we're working on now is um a model to see what that impact looks like and then how that translates into affordability, because we have to get to an affordability based upon what the state will provide, the county will provide, and what we will be required to provide. The statute also requires a match as well.
Okay, because that's what I was gonna ask is what do we, okay, but thank you. That's in process.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing no other questions, I want to thank Mr. Washington and Dr. Coleman for that very wonderful and exhaustive uh presentation. I think that we really need to delve into more details as we go along. It's a lot of information to process. But I am thankful that we have started a conversation and excited about the new schools that are coming our way. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you so much. And board members, this is also a great example of PGCPS's uh work towards consolidating many of our schools of our older facilities that are more needy into newer facilities with a long-term maintenance agreement. So here it is, we have eight schools that are gonna be brand new, have a thirty-year service agreement, and we're able to consolidate fifteen schools that otherwise would have required that ongoing maintenance. So just making that connection back to last week's board meeting around another prong in our approach to ensuring we have schools that we can manage.
Can you add that? Because that was awesome. Can you add that to my slide, Mr. Washington, please? Because that was good. Thank you. Because before I invite you guys to my meeting, did I want to make sure?
I I I will, I will do my best to transcribe that and uh, but but yes, I can definitely update that. And I will just update the slide deck, put in the the dates um and the required information and get that back over. Yeah.
And Mr. Coleman could probably have his snapshot because that was, we want to tell people that. That was really good. Mr. Coleman, would you mind shooting that over to Mr. Dr. Coleman, to Mr. Washington, please?
Sure, it was off the top of my head, but it's a part of our approach, so not a problem.
Absolutely. Thank you.
No, 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 I I I have the gist and so I will make sure we we put something together. And so, no problem.
You guys got this. You're good, you're good. Moving right along, um, follow-up, um, there are no follow-ups for the uh, for posting from um April seventeen meeting um in terms of our next steps, item four point two.
Um, uh, board member, LaSi Frazier?
Yes.
Second half to the presentation, we wanted to also give an update on the summer uh improvement projects.
Oh my goodness, I apologize. Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, so Mr. Washington, and I know you have a steering committee meeting with the county council. So thank you so much for joining. I understand that you have to step away to that next meeting that's starting in seventeen minutes.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
All right. Um, so again, thank you so much, board members. Uh, so our summer facilities upgrades and renovations are a great opportunity to improve our facilities. Uh, but it also comes with the challenge of a short amount of time the summer provides for this construction work to occur. The goal is to complete all summer renovations in a timely manner and not impact the opening of school. The last day for students this school year is June thirteenth and the first day of school is Monday, August twenty eighth. This equates to less than twelve weeks to engage in a lot of work. Uh, so at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. uh Smith. He is with our capital programs team, our program uh, uh, project manager supervisor. And he's gonna provide us with an overview of the work that we are planning to engage in this summer to improve our facility.
Good afternoon and and thank you guys for providing the opportunity. Um, can you guys see the shared screen uh before you right now? Just want to double check.
Yes.
Okay, all right, excellent. All right, so this year, a- as Dr. Coleman mentioned, we are ramping up for another strong summer. Uh, this year, we have approximately about a hundred and thirty-eight to a hundred and forty construction projects uh that will be ongoing this year. Uh, those projects uh encompass, you know, uh, major projects and and a breakout of minor projects. Uh, and underneath each one of those, there's various categories. Uh, so we could talk on some of the major projects that we have. Um, some of these projects that we have for the summer uh are gonna be phased projects. They're gonna be summer uh specific projects and they're gonna be um, you know, some that are not phased projects but are longer than the summer as well. Uh, and part of those major projects are the New New Glen Ridge Area Middle School, uh, which, you know, we are actively in construction on. And actually, we just celebrated a a topping out uh of the project last week. Uh, in addition, we have William Work Middle School uh that is actively actively in construction. Uh, site in is scheduled to be going up here soon uh and 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 it's just, you know, probably about sixty percent at this point. Uh, that, both of those schools are on target for a uh school year of twenty twenty-four opening. Uh, and those are our major projects that we have. In addition, we have Suluon High School, which we are finalizing permit approval hopefully within the next few weeks uh and and able to be able to start that project uh this summer in order to kick it off uh for Phase One. Um, some additional projects that we have or or that are considered major are the James Madison HVAC Modernization Project, uh Phyllis Williams HVAC Modernization Project. Uh, and and all of these are within this list. I'm just kind of giving you some context. Those projects are HVAC upgrades in which we are actually relocating those schools uh to Forestville and then also Robert Goddard uh in order to allow the contractor to go in and and gut the entire HVAC system, gut the, you know, fire suppression system, alarm system, and and pretty much uh improve and and upgrade all of the components uh within the facilities. Uh, those projects are about a year long and and are uh, the school's gonna be moved for about a year and and will wrap up next summer. Um, and so those are kind of some of our major projects and product types. In addition, some of our minor projects will be, you know, typical life safety issue projects, a fire alarm, PA system, things of that nature. Uh, we will have um systemic projects like HVAC boiler replacement, chiller replacements, uh switchgear. Uh, we may have, you know, playground upgrades, we'll have uh dance floor improvements, gym renovations, things of that nature. Asbestos uh abatement projects as part of our environmental program. Uh, and and then also we'll have, this is more so in a major projects, uh some of our um athletic improvements. So that would encompass our our stadium renovations um that we have at uh Laurel High School, uh that we also have at Bladensburg and and gearing up for Frederick Douglass as well. Um, most of those projects are gonna be uh, you know, phased and so where a portion of the work is gonna be scheduled for the summer. Uh, but because of how short the window uh of time that we have in the summertime uh and and the the immense needs that we have for for really improving many of our facilities, uh, this work usually gets kind of phased out from whether it's the summertime, so we'll do multiple summers or we'll do a portion of it in the summer and then kind of phase it out through the school year. Uh, many of the minor projects are gonna be summer, you know, specific, you know, so those are gonna be the dance floors. Those are gonna be some of the abatement projects and carpet replacement projects, playgrounds, uh painting projects, things of that nature. Uh, but a lot of the projects in which they are uh very um, um, you know, invasive and 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 really, you know, touch more than just one uh system, you know, where, you know, you may be doing fire alarm, you know, a sprinkler system, HVAC. Those are gonna be some of the more complicated projects that are gonna um have, you know, a phase. And so Phase One would be the summer, Phase Two may roll into the fall and on nights and weekends. Uh, and then maybe Phase Three will end up uh next summer as well. And so the list that you see before you, um, it, you know, that's kind of the overview of the type of projects that we have. And the list that is being shared right now is really a breakdown of all of the projects that are associated per uh board district. Um, and and really just identifies, you know, the the, some of the major products that we have, some are minor projects that we have. Um, in addition, who we have as managers that are gonna be the point of context for those projects. Uh, in addition, uh, we also coordinate with our summer programs department in 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 parking planning and things of that nature in order to make sure that we are providing uh as many facilities as possible to host summer programs. And so you will also see and hear whether or not those sites are approved for administration use during the summertime, uh, whether they are approved for summer program use, some of that will be yes, many of them will be no. Uh, but then some will also be a partial where, you know, maybe our work is, you know, um segmented into the gym or maybe it's an auditorium. And so, yeah, or or kitchen renovation. So yes, those areas may be down. Uh, but we're still providing access to be able to host uh our 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 young kids uh during the summertime for summer programs. Um, and then the next two columns, you'll just see kind of, you know, whether or not it's gonna have the the scope of work and is it gonna have an impact on teacher arrival uh at, you know, I think the second week of August uh and then whether it will potentially have an impact on school opening. Um, the last uh column that you'll see as well, uh, I want to say the last two is in essence really the the location of the work uh within the facility. Uh, you know, and and what area is it in the, and, you know, is it auditorium, is it in interior, is it exterior? Uh, you know, example of exterior project, like I said, the stadium renovation products, we also have some modular uh installations that we're doing as well. So those will be exterior projects that really won't have that much of an impact. Uh, parking lot uh and uh replacements and reservice and those as well, exterior. Um, and so uh those are kind of listed throughout and you'll see, and the last uh column really is just the type of project, the project type that we have. Um, you're in, and that goes back into the major, minor, and then the subcategories of whether it's life safety, whether it's environmental, whether it's um, you know, HVAC, fire alarm, things of that nature. Um, and so a- if, when you guys get a chance, uh, I'm not sure if you want to go through this now in full detail and we can. Um, but, you know, like I said, it's it's broken out in 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 district. Um, you know, there's gonna be uh some districts that may have more products than others uh right now. And I think that is, you know, is really gonna be based on needs, based on assessments and and based on a year in which those products are are approved and then are able to move forward based on design and contract award approvals, things of that nature. Um, would you like to go through line by line, I guess, would be a question, or are you guys okay with the overview?
I think the overview is good. Um, this is an opportunity to to look at it, but thank you.
Absolutely.
Will that be provided to the rest of the board members, especially those um, the uh, the ones who are uh the elected board members? So that they can share with their constituents?
We we absolutely will share it.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Are there any questions? I see, Ms. Barton, your hand is up.
Uh, yes, Mr. Smith, would you be able to just uh email that to me so I can put, I need to provide this on Board Docs?
Okay, will do, absolutely.
Thank you.
I wish you all well in the twelve weeks.
Thank you so much. A lot of sleepless nights and long afternoons.
Do you have sufficient personnel or are you contracting the workout?
So it's it's a, it's a hybrid. So while all of the work is being performed by our contractors in which are contracted out. In terms of the management, you know, we have uh nine project managers that are uh, you know, focused on delivering these products. And we also have three augmented staff that we contract out in order to help, you know, oversee these products as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions?
I think he has a seven, he has about two more minutes before he meets his seventeen, his other meeting.
Seeing that there are no other questions, I want to thank everyone for um the report. Um, and I I do wish you luck. It's a lot of work in a very short period of time. So we thank you for all the work that you're doing for our students and our teachers and our community.
Thank you so much.
Moving right along in terms of um our agenda, I'm looking for uh uh item four point oh. And like I said, can you? And like I said previously, a little bit too soon, there are no follow-ups for posting for the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Looking at four point two, our next steps, there will be no operations budget and fiscal affairs committee on May thirty-first due to our high school graduations. So our next operations meeting will be on June fourteenth at five P M. I want to thank everyone for a great meeting. And now I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move, Madam Chair.
Any second?
Second.
It has been moved and properly second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
We are adjourned. Thank you and good night.
Good night.
Night.
Thank you, have a good evening.